Good afternoon and thank you for attending and welcome to the meeting of the Finance Committee. My name is Zahira Nas and I am a councillor in the Darnall Ward and Chair of the Finance Committee. The meeting today is open to the public, however, Appendix 1 of the report at item 8 on the agenda is not available to the public or press because it contains exempt information relating to financial and business affairs. If members wish to discuss the information in this document, we will need to ask the members of the public and press to go to the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We have received four questions and no petitions from the public. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there's an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, please can each Finance Committee member introduce themselves? And I'll start with Mike first.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Mike Chaplin, representing Southie Ward.
Hello, my name's Mary Lee and I represent Darnall Ward.
Good afternoon Chair, my name's Ibyola, I'm councillor for Netherreson Sharrow.
Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Gleedless Valley.
Tony Mattinson, Green councillor for Hillsborough.
Shefford Mohammed Edgar's Ward.
Glynnis Chapman, Member from Osborough Ward.
Mike Levy, Member for West Bucklesfield and Vice Chair of the Committee.
Can I also ask officers on my right to introduce themselves, please?
Rachel Appleyard from Democratic Services.
And officers on my left.
David Hollis, General Councillor.
Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Thank you very much and welcome Philip to your first Finance Committee meeting. Is there any apologies for absence?
There's no apologies Chair.
Item 2, Exclusions of the Public and Press, as I mentioned previously, Appendix 1 of the report at item 8 on the agenda is not available to the public or press because it contains exempt information. Item number 3, is there any declarations of interest? No. Item 4, Minutes of Previous Meeting, and these are on page 11 of your Agenda Pack. Are these a correct record of the Finance Committee held on the 10th of July? Yep, thank you, that's agreed. Item 5, we have received four public questions from one member of the public and no petition for today's meeting. Nobody's here to ask the questions today, so we will be sending them a written response. The questions came from the Chair of Friends of Millhouses Park. Questions and answers will be published after the meeting, but if you do want to have sight of them, please contact Rachel Appleyard and she'll email you the questions and the responses. Councillor Shefford?
Yeah, could you just email those questions to me, Rachel? As I was local ward councillor, be quite interested to see what questions were.
Councillor Lee?
We'll swap the questions and answers please as well, thank you.
That's great, so Rachel Appleyard will send you, email you the questions. They will also be published after the meeting. Item number 6, The Work Programme, page 15 of the Agenda Pack. And the presenting officer for this is Rachel Appleyard.
Thank you Chair. So the Work Programme sets out all known agenda items for forthcoming meetings of this committee. There's been two changes to the Work Programme since the last meeting and these are outlined in Part 1 of Appendix 1 on page 18. From page 19 onwards, you can see the details of items due at forthcoming meetings. Thank you Chair.
Thank you for that Rachel, the report does contain recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Councillor Levery?
Thanks Chair. The item about Economic Reclure Fund on page 22, there are some, a number of organisations that are trying to get started with this year's ERF funding. And I note that we're now not going until September. Is it possible we can go back to the relevant committee and see if we can maybe have an urgency decision on this? Because if the fund has been being held up for another month plus, some of these organisations have got plans to implement things in September and they need the funding.
Thank you for that councillor Levery, I think if we can contact them, that'd be really useful so that organisations can use the money that's been granted to them. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions regarding the Work Programme? No? Okay, so it does contain recommendations for approval, so are we all agreed? Yep, thank you very much, that's agreed. Item number 7, Capital Approvals for Month 3, you can find these on page 31 of the Agenda Pack. Presenting Officer is Damian Watkinsun. Over to you Damian.
Thank you Chair, I'm Damian Watkinsun, I'm the Finance Manager for Capital. I'll be presenting the new additions and variations to the Capital Programme that have come forward in this month's approvals. It's quite a lot of information in Appendix 1, 2 and 3. So I'll summarise the key areas by a policy committee area, if that's okay with everyone. So under Transport, Regeneration and Climate Change, we've got two levelling up funded schemes. The first is a feasibility for improvement works at the aqueduct at Darnall and Atcliffe to try and improve the usage of that for active travel and that was part of the levelling up fund bid that was put in a while ago. The other levelling up fund scheme is works to the Market Tavern and Mudford Buildings, which were part of the Castle Gate application, to bring these buildings into use as part of the regeneration of that area. So those design works and improvement works required to the roof on those buildings. So that's about a million pounds from the Levelling Up Fund to deliver those. We've had funding from Future High Streets Fund for public realm works which have now commenced on Fargate. But now we've got contractors on site, we've got their new profile. So £4 million of that spend is going to slip into next year, so we're just bringing that forward to note so that the budget adjustment will take place to reflect that. Under Heart of the City, we've got some budget reallocations within the programme to offset the impact of the listing status on the John Lewis Building, which increased the cost of the asbestos removal. There's been some savings identified. Note, the car park demolition is no longer progressing, so that's the most part of that funding that can be reallocated to address those potential overspends. At West Bar, we're passporting a grant of approximately £3 million to the developer at that site that's coming from the Combined Authority. They've experienced, as we do, increasing cost inflation in the construction area. This grant's been secured from the Combined Authority to allow them to maintain the level of public realm that they wanted to deliver in the West Bar development, which we think is key to the regeneration of that area. So we'll be passporting that grant through to them. At Appendix 3, there's a brief summary of the back-to-back agreement terms that we'll be entering into with them. So that's just there for your review and approval as well as part of these papers. There's a number of transport schemes, some pedestrian works at Dyche Lane to improve crossings there, a 20 mile an hour zone at Fullwood, some resurfacing work on the Five Wears Walk to improve the situation for cyclists there. We're increasing the budget for design fees on the Transforming Cities Fund City Centre Scheme. And there's also feasibility works on a major scheme to improvements on Chesterfield Road, the A61 Corridor. So that's the very start of what will be a larger scheme, but it's the 250k at the moment to work on the design, the consultation, etc. Communities, Parks and Leisure, we've got some initial works to look at feasibility of improving the mugger at Tinsley Green. So that's just a small amount at the moment, about 12k, but just to put those design works in place. And then we've got approximately 180k going into Parkwood Springs as the third phase of the development on that site, where we've seen the improvements of the bike track, the installation of a kiosk and toilets and this is now works to boundaries and footpaths to improve that site there. Under Housing, the major item being the reinclusion, shall we say, of a £47.6 million budget for the roofing contract. Members might recall we had a roofing contract previously, contract went to administration, so we've had to go back out to tender. This is putting that budget in place to allow us to do that, to address the year roos on around 5,000 properties, hoping to give them around a 60-year life. Improving rainwater goods, insulation, looking at putting PV on, sorry, solar panels should I say, on blocks of flats to power communal areas and there's a provision in there as well to put it on houses and bungalows if we find suitable roofs. So that's £47.6 million, that'll be a five, six-year programme that will run there. We've doing some work on external wall insulation on Aerie Homes properties which are a certain design of home to improve their thermal efficiency. We've secured some funding from Public Sex Decarbonisation Fund. So that's allowing us to make a saving on that. So there's about a million pounds that's going to be able to be recycled back into the HRA. But now we've got the contractor profile, £8 million of that spend is moving into next year. There's also been a slight saving on refurb costs. We've tendered works for the acquisitions we make for new council houses in stock where we buy existing properties. We've contracted out the refurb work on that and it's saved, it's anticipated saving around £600,000 that's going to come again back into the HRA for further investment. Education, Children and Families, we're passporting the annual devolved formula capital of around £600,000 through to schools. So that is paid to the local authority, but it's a small amount for each school to be able to deliver the small-scale capital improvements they can on their own. So that's just noting that we're passing that through. We've got three special educational needs projects. One is to deliver a 20-place hub at Stocksbridge High School to improve the special educational needs facilities there. We're doing feasibility work changing the Peaks College Campus, which has just been vacated by Sheffield College into a post-16 hub for special educational needs. And there's been an increase in the budget of an integrated resource at Mailing Bridge Primary. So we're going to be spending approximately £500,000 there now to deliver 16 additional places for special educational needs. Mainstream provision of school places in secondary, we've got an issue emerging in Planning Area 5 which is around the Springs Academy and Parks Academy Schools. There's two projects here. One is a contribution we're going to be making to the works the school are doing themselves, so that we're contributing a quarter which will be up to 140k for those that are accepting an extra 30 children this September coming each and this is going to be improvements to their dining facilities and covered areas in order to allow better queuing and management of dining times. We're also going to be doing some feasibility work there for a more permanent expansion, potentially at both sites, to meet the increasing demand in that area. Yes, and in Appendix 2, I've got, we've got one that's for conditional approval. It's for us to be the delivery partner on GP transformational hubs. So Strategy and Resources Committee agreed in December that we'd be the delivery partner for the Integrated Care Board to deliver four new GP hubs. That's because the Integrated Care Board can't hold property. At the moment, we're looking at putting the budget in place with £1.7 million to complete the design work on these schemes. Then there'll be a bid to NHS England for the remaining funds, likely up to £30 million to actually deliver these properties. But this is subject to us signing an agreement with the Integrated Care Board, so that is currently being worked on. However, people want to be able, we want to be able to move that pace once that agreement's signed. So the request here is that this budget's approved conditionally and that when that agreement's signed, we can move straight ahead with the expenditure. And I think, sorry, I know I talk really quickly at these things, but there's a lot on there, so I hope I've summarised it okay for you.
Thank you very much for that Damian, we've got some questions. Councillor Chapman?
Yes, going back to page 58 and the feasibility money for the Peaks Campus. Could you tell me what the feasibility is for and what scope and scale it is? Because the Peaks Campus already provide SEND education and have done for a long time. So I wonder why you still needed to do a feasibility study?
The service team will be much closer to that than me, but it is specifically for, it's going to be a remodelling of that campus to meet the specific requirements that they're identifying for the cohort that they're expecting to come in. So it's likely to be around, I think they're hoping for around 300 children all with special educational needs in that area. So I think that's a shift from the numbers of possibly SEND places they had before, that's my understanding.
No, they've already had 300. They've got a contract running at the moment with two other schools that finishes next year. But they closed the facility for some people and they moved them to City Campus or those pupils chose to go somewhere else. But they've already been doing it for 300. So I don't know why they need to do another feasibility study and why it's going to cost so much to do it.
I can take that question back to the service, but that's been the understanding that's been revealed of what's required in order to deliver what the specification requires. So I'll find that detail out for you from the head of service.
Thank you. Councillor Elliott?
Thank you Chair. So I've got three questions. The first one is about the Five Wears Walk resurfacing. So, you know, it's really welcome that it's going to be improved. Can I ask which section it is? Do you know?
Bear with me. If it's not specified specifically in here, it will be in the business case, which I can get for you and I can send you the detail of the specific area if it's not specified in this particular item. But yeah, I can, yeah, I can get that for you.
Are you aware that there's a section that's fallen into the water and it's unusable near Washford Bridge? Do you know if there's any progress being made with restoring that bit?
That section was mentioned in the business case, that there was an issue there. I don't know at the moment where the plans are for that. But again, I can go back to Transport colleagues and get that information.
That'd be great, thank you, because it's been like that for a couple of years, I think. Cheers. So the next one I was going to ask you about is the Mumford Building. So the levelling up funding. In here, we've got some detail about the plans for the Market Tavern Building. Are there also plans for the Mudford Building as well?
Yeah, that is identified as being one of the regeneration plots on that castle site. So yes, but I don't know if they're quite as well-developed as what's going to be delivered on that particular site. But works needed at both buildings in order to be able to secure them and make sure they're available for development.
And are officers aware that there's a community group in that building and have discussions been happening with them?
That would be something I would expect the service to have picked up at that point. So yeah, I would imagine those discussions will have taken place because there's been quite extensive consultation on the Castle Gate scheme overall. But again, I can check that for you.
Thank you. And then just one more on the the council housing roofing replacement programme. So obviously we've got a new procurement due to the previous supply going into administration. There is reference to installing PV on a number of flats and provision to install PV on some bungalows, numbers to be determined. Is there a number attached to that? Do we know how many?
Not at the moment, I think that work will become apparent when the contractors come on site and start working on the individual roofs and see which ones are suitable. There was a similar provision in the last contract as well for that work. So at the moment, no, but again, I can go back to the Housing Service and see if they have got any outline numbers that they were thinking of. But at the moment, I say it's a provision because it's about assessing the roofs as they get onto them and seeing which types of roofs are suitable at each point. So I can certainly go back to the Housing Service and see what numbers they were envisaging for that.
I mean, that would be good, I mean surely this is a one-off opportunity to address the cost of living for tenants by making their energy bills cheaper. And if we've got a new procurement, surely that needs to be as sustainable as possible. Will it be going back to the Housing Committee?
No, it won't be specifically, no, because it's part of the already-agreed investment programme. So I don't think there are any, unless the committee themselves request updates on it on a regular basis, I'm not aware if they have or not. Again, it's something I can check with service if they're doing that sort of reporting to Housing Policy Committee.
Okay, I just hope this isn't going to be a missed opportunity, you know, to build sustainable homes for our tenants. Thanks.
Councillor Elliott, regarding one of your questions on Castle Gate Site, I think Tammy Vittica can respond to that now?
Yes, so we are aware of the new roof, we are in discussion with them about the application of the building and rushing the process.
Sorry Tammy, we'll need you to respond on the mic. Thank you.
Hi, yes, we're aware of the tenants in the Mudford Building and we're in discussion with them at the moment. We've had several meetings with them and we're continuing in dialogue with them. They're actually looking for alternative premises and we're assisting them with that search at the moment.
Thank you for that Tammy, Councillor Chaplin?
Thank you Zahira. Just also in response to Marion's question about the section of Five Wears Walk that fell into the river, I think the problem with that is that that section of walkway was not in council ownership, it's in private ownership and that is causing a sticking point with getting that rebuilt. But I really appreciated your questions on the Roofing Programme. It really is necessary. The collapse of the previous building firm has put us back a couple of years. So really welcome this work coming forward. I just have a question about the photovoltaic cells and the batteries that they would run off. I hope that they will be, well, phrase it as a question, will they be secured in such a way that it would be difficult to tamper or remove the battery units? Because I think the last thing we would want is unscrupulous people trying to seize them and take them away for their own ends. You may have more information on that Damian.
No, Fred, don't sit down and I think part of that is the responsibility, is that these are provisional sums that are in this contract at the moment. So the detail of what might be delivered in that realm is not specified and that's why they're in there as provisional sums rather than identified costs. So it will be, you know, that design work will take place during the time of the contract. It's not complete now because it's going to be about identifying what's suitable at various properties.
Thank you. I just have one question on Parkwood Springs work, Package 3, about bringing in signage, all the other work there. I'm conscious that a lot of the work is centred around the Cookswood Road End going up towards Shercliffe. But as you go over the Brow of the Hill, round to where the Penrith and Scraithwood Estate are, there's next to no signage there to indicate that people are coming into Parkwood Springs. So I would really welcome some work done on that side of the Parkwood Springs to bring it to local people's attention that they have this really wonderful resource on their doorstep. I mean, a number of people do take their dogs out for walks and do go out and explore it. But I think it's a hidden gem to many people who live in the north of the city. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, I can certainly pass that on to the service.
Thank you, Councillor Lee?
Yeah, I've got a question about the Transformational Hubs and those buildings that we will draw around the money from the NHS to complete the build and then they will be in our ownership. That means that all our costs in the future will be future-proofed in terms of the maintenance of those buildings for the future? That will be part of the whole process? Am I assuming that's right?
Yeah, that's correct. It's going to be a lease agreement with the GPs who are taking ownership and the Integrated Care Board underwriting. So it will be at no risk to the council, that's the key tenet of the agreement. I think that's the basis on which Strategy and Resources took the original decision that, you know, we're doing this as a delivery partner to enable, basically to enable this development to take place because the Integrated Care Board can't do it and can't hold property. But so the improvement couldn't take place unless another body stepped in to do this. But yeah, the key thing is, as far as I'm concerned, from a financial perspective, there will be no risk to us, we will be managing it. But we will be receiving rent and service charges that will be covering all council's costs.
Can I, is there comments? Just wanted to comment on the mugger at Tinsley Green. Obviously it's absolutely a thriving park down there. The mugger is absolutely well-used and it's time to be resurfaced because it is so well-used by all the children. You know, we have a youth club that runs down there and we're about to open some new youth activities down there. So that, if that, the fact that we're doing this bit of work now and then subsequently will have the funding to resurface is absolutely, it's wonderful, really good. And also, I just wanted to mention about the Olympic Legacy Park and the aqueduct. I was at a presentation a few weeks ago and Riverside Trust were talking about the aqueduct and what their plans for that and they do absolutely want people to use it more than it's used at the moment, but it is in a bit of a state. And I think this work will hopefully increase the usage of it and encourage people to go up the steps and they will be putting some history and narrative boards up as well to to highlight how, you know, the historic impact that that has had over the years. And if you look at some of the old pictures of Sheffield and you see that aqueduct is absolutely, it's, you know, it was spotless and it was really in really good shape. So I'm hoping that that will come back and add to the fantastic developments down there at the Olympic Legacy Park. I won't name them all, but there are many, many of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mohammed?
Thank you, my question is on page 44 Damian. It's the extra £1.6 million for John Lewis removal, so it's taken a total spend of two, eight and a half million. Did we actually ask Urban Splash to contribute? Because it's an extra and all above what we'd budgeted.
The overall budget there that's quoted, it's not just actually, not just the asbestos strip, there are other elements that have taken place at John Lewis, regarding John Lewis Building. But I think, as far as I'm aware, negotiations with Urban Splash were commercial in nature and actually the fact that they are refurbishing or taking on the car park, as it were, so we no longer need to demolish the car park, is effectively some of that work that's been negotiated around how that will be delivered. I wasn't party to the detailed agreements with Urban Splash, but this was the output from that, shall we say. So I'm sure officers had undertaken relevant negotiations.
Would it be possible for you to check whether we actually asked them for this additional? It's come up as extra on top of what we've programmed for. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Mattison?
Hi, thanks for all the work you put into this. It's just one question which I find a bit confusing in the document about the GP hubs, where it says, how are we going to achieve? about the GP hubs, where it says, how are we going to achieve it? You said there's four GP hubs completing ten existing practices, but in the table underneath, there's only nine practices listed.
Yes.
I just wondered if you could explain.
Yeah, one of the hubs, there's also, First Park Surgery is involved, but it's not relocating to one of the hubs. It's actually having a refurb that we're not involved in. So that, sorry, so it is included in the business case, so that's probably my fault in terms of how I've written it. I've read, I've gone through, I've counted up ten GP surgeries, but actually there's only nine that were, that are involved in the project that we're delivering. So yeah, I apologize, that is confusing. But yeah, First Park is having a separate refurb. I think they're undertaking that themselves. So they're not involved in part of this project, but there are ten GP surgeries involved, if you like. So that's, yeah, apologies for that.
Thank you. There is any further questions? Oh, councillor Elliot?
Sorry, can I just ask a follow-up, going back to the roofing? So this, to me, seems like, correct me if I'm wrong, a new decision. And I'm just wondering whether it would be appropriate for it to go to housing before we agree it today?
In terms of, because at this point, this is about approving the budget to go out to tender for this programme. So allowing spend on this business unit to allow the tender process to go ahead. Obviously, it's up to members, really, if they want a further decision on this or not from another body.
I just wonder, with it being ultimately a new decision, with the numbers having changed, the number of blocks, the specifications, you know, there are quite a lot of changes there, if perhaps they should be looking at this before it comes to us.
David, do you want to come in? Councillor Chapley, do you want to come in first?
Well, it's only to say that this was previously agreed, that we would have a re-roofing programme. I would have thought that a green councillor would welcome the fact that photovoltaic cells are being installed on roofs to get a net gain in sustainability. I really cannot understand why you'd want to send it off to another committee. Thank you, Chair.
I'm concerned that there won't be enough PEV and that's why I'm wondering why we should, perhaps we should ask them to have a look at it first. As far as I know, this hasn't gone to Housing Committee.
I'll bring councillor Leverie in next.
Thanks, Chair. I'm actually happy with what's been proposed here, mainly because there's another nearly 300 homes and lots of flats come into the equation to be re-roofed, which are in desperate need. So what I don't want to do is see this altered and that watered down. I think we've got in place a project which hangs together and makes sense. So I'm happy to go with this.
Councillor Lee?
I can't see any reason why we would send it back. It's just going around in circles and, you know, we need to get on with this work, absolutely. And it's a good, it's a good package of interventions that we're doing. So let's get on with it. There's people out there who are in need.
David Hollis, do you want to come in?
Yes, I mean, just to confirm, Chair, that this committee is here to confirm the capital programme element and adding these to the capital programme. They would do so in accordance with any commissioning decision that's previously been made by the Housing Committee. But it would, as long as it's not inconsistent with what has gone before Housing Committee, it will be fine to proceed here. I mean, it can always be looked at again as a commissioning decision by Housing Committee on another occasion to look at what might additionally come back further for additional capital programme.
Thank you for that, David. I think that's very clear. So we are going to go ahead with approving the capital approvals for month three. So the report does contain recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Yep, that's agreed. Thank you very much, Damien, for that. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight now, lease of land at Millhouses Park. This is on page seventy-one of the agenda pack. And Tammy and Ruth will be presenting. Thank you. Also, can I just remind, appendix one to this report is not available to the public or press because it contains exempt information. So if members do want to ask questions or discuss this, we will need to ask members of the public and press to kindly leave for that part. And we'll have to pause the webcast. Thank you.
Hi, I've not been here before, so I'll introduce myself, if that's okay. I'm Ruth Bell. I'm head of Parks and Countryside. And Tammy and I are going to do this item between us, if that's okay. I'm going to start and then Tammy's going to talk about the lease, at which point, obviously, if we want to talk about the financials, as you said, we might need to move into the closed session. I'm sure that you've all read the report. I'm not proposing to go through it line by line, but I'll just start with the recommendation that we're here to seek approval on, if that's okay. So the report seeks the approval by Finance Committee to the following proposal, to grant a new lease of the property to True North Brew on the terms set out in the appendices to the report. So a bit of background, if that's okay. The proposal was first began to be discussed as far back as 2017, when the former operator of the Wagon and Horses pub first approached the council. Conversations happened over a number of years and from sort of 2018 onwards that started happening under the Better Parks process, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Discussions were held over a number of months with the operator of the pub, the Public House, the Wagon and Horses. And conversations started happening with local stakeholders, including the Friends of Millhouses Park. At this point, the proposal was for an outside area to the pub that we were classifying as a beer garden. Conversations continued to happen and during the height of Covid, whilst we were all still in lockdown, the Public House submitted a planning application for an external trading area. There was a mix of support and opposition in the local area. And as part of the paper, you'll all have seen that we've included information on two petitions that were launched in response to the idea of the external trading area. The first was from the Wagon and Horses themselves, seeking support to lease that area of land as an external trading area. And the second was from the Friends of Millhouses Park, who felt that this was selling off the park and opposed that idea. Because there was clearly a bit of a polarised view, so in addition to those local pieces of knowledge that we had, Parks and Countryside conducted consultation as we were coming out of the first wave of Covid, asking local residents whether they supported the proposal for an external trading area. And of the responses that we received, around about 75% of respondents were in favour of the idea. Following that, the proposal was agreed under the Better Parks process and permission was granted to the Wagon and Horses to begin their onsite build. They were keen to get onsite very quickly because Covid had obviously had quite a great impact on local refreshment and facilities and pubs, who obviously were closed for a number of months. Sorry, I'm just going to reopen my laptop so that I can make sure I include everything I want to say. A tenancy at will was therefore agreed, that allowed the Wagon and Horses onsite to begin the build of the survey area. Once it was built, the Wagon and Horses began operating almost immediately, despite that not being permitted under the tenancy at will that they had. In addition to that, it became clear very quickly that the operation that they had was much closer to a small café facility, a small seasonal café facility, rather than the beer garden that we'd expected. And that led to complaints coming from the other local operators in the park, for example, the café and the ice cream facility. Over a number of months, we attempted to negotiate terms of a lease with the Wagon and Horses, but we weren't successful during that period. A further tenancy at will with some specifics was therefore offered, not permitting takeaway, so forbidding takeaway from that area. We unfortunately did continue to receive reports that it was still operating as a café and takeaways were continuing to happen from the facility. And at that point, the lease with the Wagon and Horses was terminated. Negotiations have continued since that point over a number of months, as we've tried to regularise the arrangements and deliver a good outcome for parks users, a number of whom were very, very supportive of the facility offered by the Wagon and Horses. I think it's really important to say that I feel like that picture that I've just painted you is quite a bleak one and perhaps doesn't sound very positive, but we are here saying we support the idea of a lease being put in place with the Wagon and Horses. The process has been really long and complex and at times quite difficult to negotiate in the terms of this lease. But we do believe as a service, that's Parks and Countryside and Property Services, that this addition to the park helps to create a varied and pleasant offer to users of the park, enhancing their experience whilst they're in that area. The space that the Wagon and Horses operates within the park is on the edge of the park and it was previously quite a bleak, heavily shaded area that was separated from other grassed areas by a network of paths. So it doesn't impact on local residents and wider park users from enjoying the recreational areas of the park. This facility does cross over with other operations in the park, but Millhouses is a very large, very well-used park. And as an area, it's not particularly well-served with external café offers in the way that a number of our other parks are. So we don't feel like it's one addition too many. We feel like it adds to the park and adds to the experience of people that are in that local area and using the park. At this point, I'll hand over to Tammy to talk about the specifics of the lease, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure. So I won't go into the detailed terms. They're contained within appendix one. I think it's fair to say that it's been a long negotiation process, not something that we would normally, we would try to get resolved much quicker. But I do think that now we have a terms proposed that are in line with commercial arrangements elsewhere and therefore we think we can support or recommend that these terms are supported. Just one point to note, that we've been asked that the lease actually completes in a different name to True North Brew. It will actually be in the name of KS Yearly FCB Limited Pension Scheme. And that's because they are looking, he has recently acquired the Wagon and Horses pub from True North Brew as well. So we need both leases to be co-terminists with the same lease holder.
Okay, councillor Ibula?
Thank you, Chair. Are they still going to contribute £20,000 towards play equipment? Is that still the case?
No.
Okay, since we are increasing the rent, is there any way we, the council, can fund the play equipment? Is that true?
Yes, that's the plan. The increase in rent will allow us to do the things in the park that we want to do and that the Friends of Millhouses Park are obviously very supportive of us doing.
Thank you. And do we have time to go for that?
No, not yet. Sorry. I can get you on. We will be looking to move as quickly as we can. But I think it will be a number of improvements, probably over a number of years, actually.
Please do. I'm a regular parking user up in others' parks, so I'm keen interest. Thank you.
Councillor Chapley?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Tammy and Ruth, for this report. I think we all appreciate you've had a difficult time negotiating.
Councillor Chapley, can I just stop you for one moment, please?
I just wanted to check whether it was regarding confidential information or not, with your question, because we are in public session at the moment, sorry.
Appendix one?
It's about year one seating revenue. Sorry.
Thank you. So we will need to go into a closed session now, so we're going to pause the webcast.
Let's get them all.
Questions or comments regarding this? Okay, can I just clarify, Tammy and Ruth? So Parks and Countryside have confirmed that the proposed lease arrangements will lead to a considerable investment in the park in terms of the playground improvements?
Yes. As part of the agreement with the Friends of Millhouses Park over the last few years, talking about the potential benefits to the park, we agreed with them that the first three years of rent from this area would go directly into the park. It's not a charity site, so that's not a standard requirement, but we agreed three years. Obviously, that was at the previous rent that we were hoping to get, but we will absolutely honour that with the enhanced rent that we're getting from the Wagon and Horses. So it will lead to substantial investment and will allow us to do a number of the things that they want to see in that park.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much. Yep, so that's great to hear that. Okay, so this report does contain recommendations for approval. Sorry, was there somebody else? Sorry, councillor Elliot?
It's actually fine because that was really the question. I was just going to say, you know, thanks for getting to this point, Ruth. I know it's really not been an easy process with the leaseholders and because they've reneged on their agreement with the accessible play equipment, I think it's really important that, you know, there is a conclusion reached with that. And I'm really glad that the council have come to that arrangement. And I was just going to ask about that. So just, you know, knowing that it's going to be three years, they're going to get a payment, that's really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. There is any further questions or comments? So report does contain recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Yes, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ruth and Tammy. Item number nine, youth investment fund grants, and this is in page 101 of the agenda pack. And Chelsea and Ian will be presenting officers. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Chelsea Ranhan, head of Community Services. Apologies for the voice. Not very enjoying the summer rain. Ian is going to present on our report and our brief to the committee in regards to the Youth Investment Fund. And then obviously we'll take any questions.
Okay. Hopefully read through the report. I'll run through some summary parts of the report, give you a bit of background and sort of take you through that process. So first of all, the Youth Investment Fund is part of the levelling up agenda and part of the National Youth Guarantee. And it's a £368 million government commitment to young people to transform and level up the out-of-school youth sector. The objective of the fund is to create, expand and improve local youth facilities and their services in order to drive positive outcomes for young people. And that's physical as well as mental and physical wellbeing and also improving skills for life and work. We've been going through a process over just under a year now, looking at different sites. And we've submitted thirteen applications or expressions of interest to the fund. And we're hoping to hear the outcome of those shortly. If we were successful getting all of those bids, that would amount to approximately £7.9 million, just under £7.9 million. And I stress at this point, we have not been offered any funding to date. So we may get nothing, we may get up to £7.9 million or somewhere in between. We've gone through, in terms of trying to prioritise sites and look at feasibility, one of the key things was to invest in our, in current existing counselling buildings where that was possible and only use new build where absolutely necessary. And that would be where there is a lack of suitable community facilities, because as part of youth services, we also use community facilities that are not council-owned and youth clubs are delivered in all sorts of community facilities across the city. We've also avoided locations where we were made aware by other partners that they were submitting bids to the Youth Investment Fund because this is not just, it's not just open to local authorities, it's open to community organisations as well. So a number of organisations approached us early on and we're looking at, in terms of prioritising our sites, we looked at trying not to be in competition with those. And also, in terms of looking at other priorities, was looking at areas where there are other investments. So for example, sites where there might be. investments, so for example, sites where there might be upgrades to the multi-use games areas and things like that, so that we've got additional, additionality in terms of the youth offer and those spaces, and from those spaces. Now, having gone through all of that, we are working with a number of relationship managers from the social investment business, who are one of the lead partners in terms of delivery of the grants, grants themselves are from the Department of Culture, Media and Sport, but it's gone through an intermediary grant body which involves four separate organisations, and we've been allocated relationship managers to work through and look at the feasibility of the sites, in terms of drawing up the expressions of interest that we submit, and also taking their guidance as to which sites might make, stood the best chance in terms of success, so that we prioritised working on those areas where we had greatest chance of success. As I said earlier, we've submitted 13 bids, 13 locations, two of those are new builds, then there's three larger refurbishment grants, and then very late on in the process, they opened another funding stream, which was for smaller refurbishment schemes. The original scheme was a minimum of £300,000. If it wasn't £300,000, the theory was that that wouldn't give sufficient youth benefit. But late on in the process, they also opened a second stream, which was smaller refurbishment grants of up to £150,000. That was at short notice, and so we managed to submit eight smaller refurbishment grants to that small scheme. And key, I think, in terms of what these will fund is, you know, modernisation of our spaces across different areas, accessibility improvements, so access into and within the buildings themselves, a reconfiguration of spaces to make them more suitable for youth and community use as well, because under no illusions that these are, these are community facilities, not just youth facilities. And then also environmental impacts, that was an improvement, that was a key element in terms of the Youth Investment Fund criteria, which that there was an improvement environmentally as part of this into the operation of the buildings, and that was part of the design. And then, particularly in terms of the smaller refurbishment grants, they're particularly around upgrading kitchen facilities, some of those are very old and not the most modern, so upgrading those, making those more, better fit for purpose, and also improving some of the toilet facilities across the site, so that young people have better access. And the reason we've brought this decision, because this is a prospective decision, so we haven't, as I said earlier, we haven't been offered any funding as yet, we haven't been successful as yet. But if we do get offered the funding, we have a very tight turnaround, particularly with the larger projects, of actually delivering these, because they have to be delivered, the aim is to deliver them by the end of December 2024, that's a very short term, time scale for building projects, and we have to have spent all the money that we are allocated by 31st of March 2025, and those are absolute deadlines, so that the spend 31st of March 2025 is absolute, and that's a prerequisite from the Department for Culture, Media and Sports. So, in terms of what this will do, hopefully it will help us have the right facilities, modern facilities, in the right places, and that will help to contribute to the community use strategy priority, to deliver three community use sessions every week in every ward in the city. And so our recommendation therefore is to approve accepting any, all or none of these grants, depending on what we are offered, and potential of up to £7.9 million. Hopefully that's a good bit of background.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Councillor Mohammed?
Can I ask why the 13 sites haven't been shared with councillors, even if in a Part Two report, like we just have in Millhouses? That'd be my first question, a couple more, go on, on that one.
And the, at the beginning of June, an update on the youth strategy was sent out to councillors, and it was sent via the local area committee managers, and that contained a full list of the sites as part of the update on the youth strategy.
Must have missed it. Because it would have been useful to have it as an attachment here, if it's been shared with those councillors there, so we can kind of see what we, you know, whether we think these buildings are in the right place. I mean, we just heard from Councillor Lee talk about, you know, a youth provision in their ward that's in a park, and takes, going to take advantage of some investment from the Parks Department, and I'd like to see more of those, if possible. So it would be nice to know if the new builds were where they are, and obviously, I do take point about the difficulty you're going to have to spend the money with it. I mean, so, you say it's gone to, has it gone to Communities Committee? This issue, because youth services do sit underneath there, don't they?
Yes, this has been regularly briefed in Youth Services Committee.
Briefed or gone to the committee?
It was, it hasn't formally, it hasn't formally, it hasn't formally gone to committee yet, because we haven't been offered any funding, however, the update on the expression of interest has gone to committee on a regular basis, and we were up to with the expression of interest.
Okay. You know, on page 104, you talk about, one of the criterias is where there's a lack of suitable community facilities. Could I ask, has that been a major factor in your decision of where these are going to be? Can you give me some reassurance, having not got access to the list in front of me? Is any of the new builds in areas that traditionally have anything? Or not?
The, both the new builds are in areas where there aren't existing, well, one is a replacement for an existing building that's beyond the end of its lifespan, and one, there is no current community facilities in that area.
Okay. Possible, just away from here, just send me the list. Save, control, and draw the emails, okay? Thanks Chair.
Could I, could I just add, the sites that we have proposed as well, our young residents have been very actively involved in that decision-making, and also what we've put forward in our expression of interest as designers, locations, that they would find appealable, so that's an important factor in this process.
Thank you. Councillor Chaplin?
Thank you Chair, and thank you Councillor Shafak for raising this. If the list did go out to all councillors, I'm in with you in that I can't remember having sight of it, it would be really helpful to have that. As one of the wards which only at the moment gets a detached youth support, really welcome expansion of the youth service so that we can do more in Southie area, in the area of Southie Ward, but I'm well aware that, you know, there are many other wards that are in a similar position. So, would really wel, really welcome this expansion and be happy to support it. And we'd be happy to talk with you at a later date about further work that might be done in my local area, but that's for another day. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Malison?
Yeah, thanks from us as well, I mean, it's great that you're planning ahead so that we're ready, if the funds do come. I've just got a question about the climate impact assessment, or climate implication, I'm very pleased you've got a section on there, you know about it. It does say blanket climate impact assessment, could you send us a copy of that? I'm a bit concerned about a blanket assessment when you've got many different sites, some new builds, some aren't. Clearly, we need a commitment that there's going to be individual impact assessments for each site, and picking up some of the other things that you've mentioned under that heading, you know, improving heating controls and so on, that's great, newer, more efficient appliances, also good, you know, obviously considering things like induction, cooking and so on. The, there's no mention, I don't think, of solar panels and batteries, I think, I think there's a commitment to put those in new builds, and all, where we can, basically. And linked to that, in terms of boiler replacement, I would hope that we can have a commitment that that's with heat pumps. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, the reason for doing a blanket one climate impact assessment was because this is a decision that is overall 13 sites, and each site, one of the key considerations has been the environmental impact, including solar panels, air source heat pumps and battery storage, and also in terms of improving glazing, because some of the things are actually improving the thermal conductivity of the building as well, which is really important, to keep the heat in, the first thing in reducing. So each project has had those as part of the design proposals, as we've been working up the designs for each of them with the capital delivery service.
Thanks, that's very helpful, thanks.
Thank you. There is any further questions or comments? I would just like to say, thank you for the report, and did you say it's a youth strategy that identifies the locations potentially for this funding?
It was a report that was sent out to all councillors through the local area committee managers, I think it went out, well, it was sent to them on the 2nd of June, so it should have been somewhere around about that. But I'll send an email with all the sites, just so you have them in one place, linked to the report, so you know what there is and what's happening at each of those sites.
Chair, a quick search of my community service managers' emails to me, and...
They haven't sent it out. I will send you the list.
Yeah, that'll be useful, Ian, if you could just send it out to us, thank you. But I would like to say, I'm sure members across the chamber will agree that if we get this over the line, the funding will raise aspirations of our young people across Sheffield. So this will provide safe, ambitious community youth services where young people in Sheffield can thrive. So I would like to thank colleagues for all the hard work, putting together 13 bids, and good luck with this, and please keep us updated. Thank you very much. Okay, so, we've got, this does come with a recommendation for approval, sorry, for approval, are we all agreed? Yep, we all agree, thank you, that's unanimous. Moving on to item number nine, sorry, turn the Sheffield NHS health check, and that's page 101 of the Agenda Pack, and Greg Fell would be doing the presentation, thank you.
Thanks Chair. So, Greg Fell, Director of Public Health, it's a relatively short report, it should be relatively quick, it's in some ways a relatively straightforward procurement decision, the policy on this is set for us nationally, and is limited if no scope to deviate from the actual policy. The purpose of the report is to seek permission from the committee to commission the NHS health check programme. As I say, it's a nationally set programme, initially set by Public Health England many, many years ago, it's now led by the Office of Health Improvement and Disparities, and the programme invites all eligible people, i.e. people between 1474, for a health check, cardiovascular risk check, once every five years. So, local authorities are responsible, it's one of the things directors of public health are statutorily responsible for, and the reason for it coming for a decision today is, it, like lots of things, were curtailed, stopped during the period of the pandemic, because primary care was quite clearly busy with other things. The back end of the initial phase of the pandemic, April 21, the contract with the then provider, primary care Sheffield, expired. Public health teams, my responsibility didn't get, didn't get busy renewing the contract, because we were still busy with the pandemic until at least the end of 21, probably into a bit of 2022, and there were some significant pressures from recovery. So we're now at a stage where we do want to re-procue this, and essentially, the ask of the finance committee is to improve, is to approve the commissioning of an external provider to deliver that programme for a period of five years. It's a total five-year value of £925,000, and the detail is in the report, I shall pause there.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Councillor Chaplin?
Yeah, just to educate me, the funding source, is that through the NHS or is it through the local authority?
It's local authority, Mike, it's part of the public health grant, it's one of the things that I'm mandated, there are a few things I'm mandated to provide, and that's one of them. So it's local authority funding, basically. Historically, it's been provided by the NHS, but commissioned by local government.
So it comes out of council tax money then?
No, it's a ring fence grant from Department of Health and Social Care to provide public health services, of which this is one of them.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at, thank you for that. Greg?
Councillor Lee?
Yeah, and the report talks about certain groups being more at risk than others, and we all know what those, who those groups are. Whoever the provider is, take a very proactive approach with those groups? So, you know, there might be, in certain situations, people don't go for the checks, ignore invitations, that kind of thing, so how proactive? It seems to me that it is very important that the provider is proactive in trying to get as many people through these checks as possible, not that the ones that are going to be waiting on the doorstep for the, for the check as soon as they hear about it, you know, it's the ones that don't hear about it, ignore it, don't see it. You know, you know what I'm talking about, so how proactive are they going to be, I guess?
Thanks Councillor Lee. Yes, in short, we do know the drill. It is for the provider to do that, there's a commissioner who will flog them quite hard on that. Historically, the previous arrangement that we had, we basically, we were required to offer health checks to all of the eligible population once in a period of five years, and that's, there's 60,000 people in Sheffield that are eligible, at least actually, probably a bit more than that. But the previous arrangement that we had, and I'd seek a similar arrangement, we need to agree that with our provider, is that they pay £20,000 for a standard health check and £30,000 for a health check in a high-risk cohort, so someone of Asian origin, someone who we know has pre-existing high blood pressure, they're much more likely to benefit from and have their risk managed. So, we offer differential payments in that way. What I would dearly love to do, but the budget won't extend to it, is do the same as we did during the period of the pandemic with the Covid vaccine, where we invested very, very heavily in working with and through community and faith leaders, but the budget doesn't extend to resourcing that properly. Some of it will happen, some of it will happen serendipitously, but we can't systematically resource it, I wish we could.
Thank you for that, Greg. I agree with what Councillor Lee has just said, I think it's really important that we are able to do some kind of outreach and engagement with communities. Covid did highlight the disproportionate effect on Black, Asian and minority ethnic communities, so I welcome this programme, and I'm keen for us to progress with this work as soon as possible to tackle the health inequalities in our communities. So, thank you very much for that, and I hope that we will get an update on how you're progressing with this. So, there is recommendation for approval for this report, are we all agreed? Yep, thank you very much, that's agreed, that was unanimous. And that's the end of the meeting today, the next meeting is on the 11th of September at 2pm. Thank you very much for your attendance.